All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Pastor Terrance Curtis. Good to see you Pastor, Calvary Baptist Church in Jonesboro. Be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you would. Stand with me and we're actually going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Sergeant, former Sergeant, Technical Sergeant David Volmer. Is he here? All right.
Shall we pray? Father in heaven, we come this evening in the spirit of First Timothy 2 that reminds us to pray for our leaders that we may live at peace and have a quiet life within our communities. We come this evening, we ask oh God that you would enlighten our commissioners whose jobs are so difficult and burdensome, but give them supernatural wisdom oh God as they consider all of the relevant information that shall be presented tonight and for those who will be sharing that they will speak with clarity. We ask Father that you would help our commissioners to understand all points of view, that they would render decisions not on their own behalf but for the betterment of our county as a whole, that your peace would prevail in this time of sharing and that Clayton County would be a better county because of what happens here tonight. It is in Jesus' name we ask and we do pray. Amen.
Sergeant Volmer, would you come forward and lead us in pledge? That's fine, right there sir. Lead us.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you sir.
Thank you Pastor.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners' October the 5th, 2021 meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any members have any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to, let me find it, remove items 22, Resolution 2021-206, the employment agreement for our financial, Chief Financial Officer Ramona Thurman. Her contract actually is not up but in munis it showed something different, that it was up this year, but it's not up till 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, is unanimous. Any others?
Well, number, excuse me, 23, I just have a couple of questions and all, so can we just?
You want to take them now or do you want to?
Take it now.
Okay.
Whatever's better, I just have, well, really, two main questions.
Well, the choice is if you'd like to leave it on the consent agenda but want to clarify some questions prior to moving forward, we can entertain your questions now, but if you want to take it off then we can do it separately as well.
Okay, entertain your questions now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, one is, because I did notice that about that termination, not termination, but that expiration date.
That's correct.
So what about 23, is that due date up now or?
Yes, that is correct. That one is correct.
Okay. Okay, and there's a portion in the, in the agreement that wasn't clear to me. Let me go back to it. Regarding either termination or, it's not clear, I think it's B in the contract?
I think the contract is the same contract from previous, two years ago.
Yeah, yes, Section 6.3, that's the question I have.
Mr. Reed, can you state with that?
Yeah, it just means about the non-renew and all or if it needs to be stated or not stated or how does that work?
So that particular section says that if the government body declares the intent not to renew the agreement by a vote at a duly authorized public meeting in accordance with the requirements of the law of Clayton County, Georgia, that termination shall occur. If the board chooses not to renew, then there's an argument that that termination would occur according to this language here.
Okay, are we still obligated for the payment and all or how does that work?
There will be a, that under Section 7, that if the employee is terminated, that there is a severance.
Six months, correct.
Correct.
Okay, that's if we terminate?
Correct.
Yes. You have any more questions?
Not all that, but it is up for renewal?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Any other items? All right, here are none. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second the motion, any questions? Here are none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Next item is Veteran of the Month, Senior Services.
All right, our Veteran of the Month is Air Force Veteran Technical Sergeant David A. Volmer. David Volmer was sworn into the U.S. Air Force in Detroit, Michigan in July of 1971 on a delayed enlistment program. He reported for duty in Los Angeles, California, September of 1971. He went through basic training in Lackland Air Force Base, Texas, and was assigned as a Specialty Law and Enforcement Officer, which is basically military police. His first base assignment was at Hickam Air Force Base, Hawaii, and his tour of duty was shortened, lasting only 27 months. Sergeant Volmer was reassigned to Maxwell Air Force Base in Alabama. He completed his accounting training at Shepherd Air Force Base in Texas and worked in a material accounting office and later at the ROTC headquarters. While at Maxwell Air Force Base, he met and married his wife, Yvonne Griffin. Later, he was assigned to Kadina Air Force Base, Okinawa, Japan, where he was promoted to Staff Sergeant and placed in charge of commercial services and the base telephone billing system. He and his wife soon after adopted a three-year-old son that was born at the military base hospital through a Japanese adoption agency while stationed at Okinawa. Sergeant Volmer attended the Air Force Base Leadership School where he wrote a poem about his son that was placed on a plaque and hung at his school. The highlight of his military career was in 1973, while on guard duty on the flight line at Hickam Air Force Base, he witnessed the arrival of the first POWs from the Vietnam War back onto U.S. soil. Sergeant Volmer also got to guard the U.S. President's meals and was the escort for the Prime Minister of Japan during their international summit. While as NCOIC of the Commercial Services Unit at Kadina Air Base, Japan, he was instrumental in the development of the first automated Class B telephone billing service. At Maxwell Air Force Base, Alabama, as NCOIC of travel pay, he helped develop the first TDY, a military credit card. He was also assigned special duty at Maxwell Air Force Base as the Air University Command Representative for the base's disaster preparedness office and oversaw three fallout shelters. The last base assignment put his family back at Maxwell Air Force Base. After being promoted to Tech Sergeant, he attended the NCO Academy at Kessler Air Force Base, Mississippi. During the 10 years back at Maxwell, he carried out duty assignments of NCOIC of pay and collection, travel pay, and NCOIC of military pay. Sergeant Volmer retired October of 1991 with over 20 years active duty in the U.S. Air Force. After retiring from the Air Force, Sergeant Volmer became a teacher and taught 14 years at Adamson Middle School in Rex, Georgia, until he retired in 2013. He has served as a Clayton County Meals on Wheels volunteer for a number of years and he and his wife are members of Zion Hill Baptist Church in Jonesboro. If you would, please help me recognize and honor Tech Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next we have a proclamation, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize Cyber Security Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize the vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from, and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact on our individual and collective safety and privacy. And whereas critical infrastructure is increasingly reliant on the support of information systems and technology, and whereas cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet, be it with a computer, mobile phone, or other internet-connected device. Whereas monitoring your accounts, being conscientious of what you share online, keeping computer software up to date, creating unique passwords, and changing them regularly, installing antivirus programs and firewalls, and using mobile devices and other internet-connected devices safely are ways people and organizations can protect themselves from phishing, viruses, ransomware, other types of malware, financial loss, and loss of sensitive data. And whereas we showcase the need to inspire, engage, and inform the public about the demand, opportunities, and career options available within the area of cybersecurity, and highlight how Clayton County's cybersecurity workforce is dedicated to enhancing, promoting, and ensuring safety online. And whereas cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, an awareness of essential cyber hygiene will improve the security of information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore, I, Chairman Jeffrey E. Turner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize October as Cyber Security Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to be responsible and to educate themselves about the safeguards and potential threats involving cybersecurity, whether you're logging in at home, schools, workplaces, businesses, or using public access networks. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of October in the year 2021.
Mr. Volmer, I would like for you and your wife to take, because I forgot the ash evening, your wife.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you.
Good to see you.
All right, group, all three, one, two, three.
Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Crystal Perry.
Crystal Perry, Lovejoy, representing District 3. That is my commissioner. Hey, I like to say, hey world, it's your girl, Melanated Pearl, bringing that black light to things that aren't quite right. Crystal Perry again, but I am here tonight representing our wonderful Clayton County Library Board of Trustees, and I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about financial literacy and the programs that are available to all of the residents of Clayton County free of charge. Next to physical health, financial health is the most important aspect of anyone's life. I mean, we're in a pandemic, if you're not feeling it, and that's not true, then, you know, teach us your secrets. We are happy to provide a trusted resource of information on core personal finance skills because we understand how critical it is for our citizens to make independent financial decisions and informed choices in the market pace and save for retirement and build a individual wealth. The Clayton County Library System provides free, unbiased financial program information and services on topics like reducing debt, improving credit savings, home buying through a partnership with BB&amp;T and now Truist Bank. Our healthy, wealthy, and wise program is designed to build better families through financial literacy. Our events and activities are created for families, youth, older adults, and entrepreneurs. If you do not know about the Entrepreneur Kit that you can check out, laptop, printer, these things are free and available to you. To learn more about the Clayton County Library System and many programs and services we offer in the community, please visit the website at ClaytonPL, that's for Public Library, dot org, ClaytonPL.org. You can follow us also on social media platforms in Clayton County. Please use the resources that are available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Chairman Turner, thank you for moving public comments back to the beginning of the board meetings. It was removed completely then reinstated at the end after commissioners decided what they were going to do without our input. There are signs in my district that state, your opinion matters, let your voice be heard. On Commissioner Davis's bio, it states, "If you put people first in your work efforts, change is always positive and meaningful." Here are some public comments. Ms. Ori complained about the trash all over her streets. Rob Leatherwood said the commissioners have voted twice to cancel the Keep Clayton County Beautiful program without a replacement. This was supposed to be a goal in your 2019 retreat summary on page four, Quality of Life. Do we hold those commissioners responsible for the trash count, accountability is kryptonite to a politician? Ms. Tally said, "Didn't we already address Universal Trash Pickup? Why are we doing it again?" I was at the hearing at Battle Creek, and one of the major complaints was undetermined administrative costs. Carol Yancy's email pointed out the flaws with Universal Trash Pickup and the Zen City survey. Do we have to pass UTP to see what's in it? It appears that the only comment some commissioners want to hear is their own. Some Commissioner Davis thanked you for the hearing last Thursday on changing the name of street signs. It was interesting, enlightening, and educational. I learned of the financial origins of the HBCU, Alcorn State, and the University of Tuskegee, but I didn't hear anyone speak up on behalf of changing street names. The federal government is raising taxes, rising inflation, and our property taxes just went up. Is this the right time to spend money on changing street names? Can you give this to Commissioner Davis, please? It's a Christmas package, early.
So you shake it out before you give it to him? Thank you, sir. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia, Clayton County. The topic of my discussion today is mandatory trash pickup and what mandatory trash pickup does not address. Mandatory trash pickup does not address litter. What is perceived and what is real? What is real is that the commercial corridors and vacant corridors of this county is littered with trash and litter. This is real. What is perceived is with the commercial and vacant corridors having trash and litter, it is perceived that the whole county is trashy and litter-strewn. This is not true. Case in point. Commissioner Franklin, your neighborhood is relatively clean. Chairman Turner, your neighborhood is relatively clean. Commissioner Hambrick, your neighborhood is also clean. Commissioner Davis, yours too is also very clean. And so too are all the subdivisions are free of trash with very little litter. Our problem will not be solved with a mandatory trash pickup. Our problem with litter will only be solved with education and enforcement of laws already in place. And this consists of a reinstatement of Clayton Clean and Beautiful with every man, woman, and child on board, with every business on board, with every vendor on board. You should teach clean and beautiful when you rise up. You should teach clean and beautiful when you lay down. You should teach cleaning beautiful when you walk by the wayside. Let's start with wrecker services in this county. They pick up wrecked cars that leave glass, plastic, and car parts in the road and on the side of the road. Let's start with a public service announcement. Tell all little children to put their Halloween candy wrappers in a proper receptacle. This concludes my comment. Are there any questions? Seeing there are none, I have a question. How do you like me now? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Elmenar Lord.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elmenar Lord, and I'm here again to voice my opinion or for you guys to help me, for the commissioners and the police officers to help me, because I'm still going through with my neighbors, the harassment, lights in my house, heavy noise, and music. And I'm sure that I'm a citizen of Clayton County, and I'm sure that everyone likes peace and quiet. And I'm in my house and there is no peace because of my neighbors. So I'm here again because I need help. It is still going on. It is still going on. Even this morning, the rain yesterday and this morning again, I have to left my house very early because there's daylight right through and through. Every sounds, music everywhere, a turn, a turning, and we'll go in my bedroom downstairs, it would be there in the kitchen, the same thing. And I'm here again, I need help. Please, can you help me? There is no way no one should be going through something like this. I'm paying mortgage, I'm paying property tax, and there is no way no one should ever be harassed by my neighbors. So I'm asking again for help. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next, we'll entertain the consent agenda items.
See a motion to approve consent agenda. I'll make the motion as there's a second.
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Here are none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next three items are board appointments.
First, board appointments to Behavior Health and Developmental Disabilities Board. This is Commissioner Davis's selection. Ms. Janice Scott has resigned from the Department of Behavior Health and Developmental Disabilities, Region 3 Advisory Council. The new appointment will start immediately and will expire February 28, 2024. Commissioner Davis.
Chairman, I apologize, but I have to hold this over one more time till the 19th. It is very difficult to find someone to serve on this board at this time.
Madam Clerk, hold that over till October 19th. Next board appointment is for the Zoning Advisory Board. Large disappointment is to feel the unexpired term of Addie Whitaker on the zoning advisory board. The term will begin immediately and will expire August 19, 2022. A large appointment, any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Ms. Audrey Bryant Lewis to this board.
Audrey Bryant Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Boards, Commissioner Hambrick's recommendation. Mr. Robert McAllen appointment expired on October 2nd, 2021. New term will begin immediately and will expire October 2nd, 2024. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to hold this appointment, please.
Hold till October 19th or do you need longer than that?
19th.
Madam Clerk, hold till October 19th. That concludes the board appointments, that we need executive session.
Yes, just on personnel.
All right, I'll make the motion to go into executive session for personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Everybody have a good evening? All right, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I'll second, and those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
Good evening again, Board of Commissioners. On behalf of the Solicitor, per Civil Service Rule 5.201...
Chairman, I apologize, but I have to hold this over one more time till the 19th. It is very difficult to find someone to serve on this board at this time.
Madam Clerk, hold that over till October 19th. Next board appointment is for the Zoning Advisory Board. Large disappointment is to feel the unexpired term of Addie Whitaker on the zoning advisory board. The term will begin immediately and will expire August 19, 2022. At large appointment, any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Ms. Audrey Bryant Lewis to this board.
Audrey Bryant Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issued unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Boards. Commissioner Hambrick's recommendation, Mr. Robert McAllen. Appointment expired on October 2nd, 2021. New term will begin immediately and will expire October 2nd, 2024. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to hold this appointment, please.
Hold till October 19th, or do you need longer than that?
19th.
Madam Clerk, hold till October 19th. That concludes the board appointments, then we need executive session.
Yes, just on personnel.
All right, I'll make the motion to go into executive session for personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issued unanimous. Everybody have a good evening? All right, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issued unanimous. Ms. Ambrose.
Good evening again, Board of Commissioners. On behalf of the Solicitor, per Civil Service Room 5.201, Human Resources is requesting step increases for the following employees. Proposed grade 20, step 10 for Ayesha Jordan, Executive Assistant, total compensation $65,015 with a salary of $47,025. Proposed grade 21, step 16 for Wayne C. Williams, Victim Services Supervisor, total compensation $72,587 with a starting salary of $53,246. The cost for this request is $13,778. However funded, is available in the Solicitor's budget.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Problem, we've been second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issued unanimous.
Thank you, Chairman.
I would like at this time to make a motion to amend Resolution 2020-1-207 in reference to the employment contract for Mr. Dietrich Stanford. It's also a Scribner's error here, the spelling of his name is D-E-T-R-I-C-K. But the contract, that's not it?
No.
T?
He's right.
Is it right? Scratch the last part, scratch the last part. But the contract for the amount should be, should read 205 and not whatever last, last resolution reflected. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, that was my, excuse me, I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issued unanimous. All right, motion to adjourn. I'll second, those in favor, aye. Opposed. Issued unanimous.